Welcome to the Monday, April 7th, 2025, meeting of the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School Committee. Please stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will start with the student representative report. Ms. Powers.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me tonight. Starting off, I mean, it's an exciting time at DY, spring finally, after a long, long winter, but our spring sports are in full swing already with huge success, this unmounted success that nobody was expecting, I think. Our track teams have been amazing. Our baseball team has also been amazing. They just had a huge win over Ta- Taasqua last weekend, and I know they've been doing great ever since, as well as our lacrosse teams. We had our MCAS last week for 10th grade, and it was the first time that the MCAS wasn't the graduation requirement. So I think that teachers were navigating how to keep students motivated, and it seemed to go really well from what I heard. Right now, we're all in deep preparation for our AP exams, which start the first week of May and go through the second. So it's two straight weeks of exams. So all of our AP classes are kind of wrapping up any new information. We've just been in like a lot of review ever since. We also are preparing for our play, which is taking place during the first week of May as well, and also the middle school play is taking place this week, as far as I know, on Wednesday. And then our winter guard and percussion encore show is tomorrow. So it's the last time to see the award-winning production before it's over for the season, and I got to see it. I know during Step Up Day, when the seventh theaters come, I got to see a little bit of the show, and it was absolutely amazing, as per usual. And besides that, our term three ended today, so three quarters of the way through the year, and we're just kind of getting ready for April break, which is in a week and a half, and we have a half day on the 18th. So everyone's just looking forward to that.
And I see your sweatshirt. I know you were highlighted on our website. Congratulations for your acceptance to Boston College. We're all very proud and excited for you. And as you mentioned, the Dennis Yarmouth Intermediate School After-School Group is presenting the Lorax this Wednesday at 6:30 in the Performing Arts Center in conjunction with Cape Cod Harwitz Junior Theater. And then I know that Mr. New is probably going to remind me that the Winter Percussion is having their last performance this Wednesday night as well in the upper gym. They received second place in the NS- in NESBA championship last week. So great things there as well. So thank you for that. I think those are all the school stuff, and Dr. Smith usually has stuff as well, but wanted to make sure I pointed out those two things. Thank you so much. I know you have plenty of stuff to do that's due tomorrow, so we appreciate your time here today. And next, we have our 2025-2026 School Choice Participation Discussion.
All right, thank you. So it's an annual requirement, the school committee take a vote on whether or not the district will participate in school choice. So this is the committee's vote, and again, this is just high level about whether or not the district will participate then. And actually, the committee just adopted a new policy at the last meeting, which will have some more sort of guidelines on how we part- how we participate, and it tightens up our process a little bit. But now the committee has to make a determination about whether or not we will participate. And and just again, for clarification, both for your sake and for the public's sake, this is doesn't allow us to stop our children from, you know, our kids can choose to go into any district that accepts school choice. This is about whether or not DY will accept school choice children. That's what you vote about. Yes, we will accept school choice children or not. And then if the committee votes yes, then what we'll do as a team is then we'll determine, we'll look at enrollment and determine at which grade levels, how many seats, open a lottery, and again, it's the policy that you all adopted. I believe it was just at the last meeting outlines that, has some specific dates for us to post that information on the website, et cetera, and timelines for notifying folks. But first, you all have to determine whether or not this year we are going to participate in school choice. So that is the discussion up in front of you.
Mr. Glenn.
Just a quick question. How many of the surrounding districts are doing school choice?
As as of today, all of them.
So again, as as Dr. Smith said, we're required financially for any student that lives in, a school-aged child that lives in Dennis or Yarmouth, and regardless, if they go to school here. And then if they, someone, we do decide on school choice and they come here, then we do get some type of reimbursement from that outlying town. So, you know, for every one lost. And there's a variety of reasons that people do school choice, and I know we've talked about it, whether they're going to Tech or somewhere else or charter school. So there's reasons, you know, other than our educations and our great stuff that people leave here. But and I know we've looked at research on who's leaving and why and all that type of stuff. But to Joe's point, if every district is doing it and we have the capacity, which will be decided by administration, you know, it's not a bad thing to do, but it's up to the committee. Mr. New.
Thank you. Do you have a breakdown of the students that tuitioned in, so to speak, choi- choose us?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. It's roughly 150 students that currently school choice into the district.
What levels, what areas?
Oh, it's it's all throughout the district. Yeah, there's no, it's not like a particular degree level.
There isn't any particular area where we excel in that?
No, it's pretty, pretty well spread throughout the district.
Okay.
And then some, you know, it's, you know, students who, you know, it's not uncommon to have a student who, as example, who started in DY, and then the family may have moved to a neighboring community, and they they want to stay with us. So that student is technically a school choice student, even though, you know, essentially, they're choosing to stay with us as opposed to go to the, now their new neighborhood, school community. I sign a lot of those throughout the course of the year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I move that the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District participate in the 25-26 School Choice Program.
So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Okay, that motion carries. The next is a discussion on the transfer of E and D to the capital stabilization.
All right. So in your packet, you have just a little bit of support documentation for this next conversation. When we had the conversation during the budget, I had mentioned that we would be coming back to have this discussion as well, and my recommendation to the committee. When we had our E and D certified this past year or coming into this current year, the excess and deficiency certification was higher than I anticipated. And so the committee has, so you'll see on that page that you have in front of you, you had as of the 4th of March, when you all voted your final budget, that's the first column. At that time, there was $3,250,000 and a little bit more of certified E and D. You had voted at that time to commit $250,000 to the operating budget and voted at that time to commit $416,150 to debt from E and D, which leaves you a remaining balance currently of just under 2.6 million in E and D. At that time, we had recommend, or I had mentioned that we'd be coming back with a further conversation around a potential transfer of some additional E and D into capital stabilization. There's a, and then under that pair is a paragraph which describes the rationale. And so the rationale for the $700,000 comes from the, where that $700,000 comes from. So that $700,000 came from unanticipated revenue. That unanticipated revenue was $702,107, which came from both from two places. One was Medicaid and the other was interest on investments. You know, the the flip side of the high interest rates is that we're getting good, we had been getting good returns on our investments. You know, those rates are starting to come back down, but we've had, you know, a couple of years of high interest rates, which is hard for when you're trying to borrow money, but it's good when you have money sitting in accounts. So we, there, and we had a higher Medicaid reimbursement than we anticipated. So that number, that 700,000, is based upon those two higher returns, those two higher revenues than we anticipated. And then the reason for transferring into capital stabilization is, as you all are aware, we do have a strategic objective related to our strategic plan to work on a five-to-10-year capital plan for the district. So this would support some, with some additional funds in our capital stabilization plan to allow the district to have some of its own funds to support that capital, those capital plans, whether it's actually funding projects or by funding design to get projects shovel-ready. And then also by moving it into that account, we're able to earn better interest than it just sitting in our checking account, quite frankly. So to be able to, those are the rationale for transferring it. And then the timing is the towns by right and statute have the ability to, if they so choose, to put this on their town, as a town meeting warrant article, to say no, and there's a timing piece. And so by waiting till today and not doing this as part of your budget vote, it just puts everything within the appropriate timing, so they don't have to call another special town meeting. Just quite frankly, would have been, it's statutorily, we don't have to wait for when they already have a town meeting scheduled, but it just would have been bad business for us to not wait until they already have a town meeting scheduled. So now we're within that timeline that if you all decide this, then I will send letters to the appropriate folks at the town following this meeting, notifying them that you all have made this decision, and then they will have the timeline between now and when they already have a town meeting scheduled, if the, if they so choose. And if so, the town folks decide, they can vote no. And if they do vote no, then the money just stays in A and D, or E and D, rather. But again, it's just sort of trying to, again, be good partners and not force, if the town wanted to, them to have a a special town meeting before they already have a town meeting scheduled.
You go, Ms. Barton.
I'd like to make a motion to move that the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School District transfer $700,000 from excess and deficiency to capital stabilization.
We have a motion and a second. We have any questions or comments, Mr. Glenn?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I tried to get in before. Just two questions. Is the town aware of this now? Like, do they know these numbers, or they won't know until after we vote on it?
So the town in general?
By the town administration.
Yeah, I mean, we've discussed this in the finance subcommittee meetings. It was part of the the larger budget conversations as well, so.
Yeah, no, I just, I didn't know if they already passed their warrant to go to town meeting already or not. But it's, it's like you said, it's just good business, but.
Yeah.
And the other question is tangentially related. We have had previously, I think it was when we were building this building, that banks came in talking about our fiscal health and how our bond rating is. And I just don't know if that's something that is done. We could do that again, just because I think we're in very good health, and it's good for the community to know that, that, you know, our our bond rating and what we get, you know, for our interest rates is good. Because when she was in here, she was fantastic, and it was like, this is really good news. So I always like to spread good news, but it's kind of a different topic, but.
Yeah, and as I mentioned, I don't know if it's last meeting or the meeting before that, at some point soon, I have the, I have legal counsel working on a legal opinion for you. I just have it in email, but I have him working on a memo. I want to come back, excuse me, want to come back to the committee and get a a motion to restructure the treasurer position, and I know we had some discussion around that in a superintendent's report. And once we get that in position, that would be something that I would like the treasurer to come and present that type of information. Because again, we're going to need to bond related, hopefully related to the ME Small Project. So there's going to be some things that coming down the road. And and when it comes to a capital plan, it's going to need part of the, what this committee is going to need to work both as a committee and then with the two respective towns on how are we going to finance the projects, you know? So all that financial and fiscal health as a district is going to be important information to have as part of that conversation. So agreed, and having a treasurer structured slightly different will be very helpful to that process.
Ms. Beavis.
I'm curious to know why you came up with this amount. I know having capitalist stabilization fund is new and much needed, but we also have aged buildings, so my instinct would tell me, not knowing what you and the finance committee, subcommittee talked about, why not a bigger amount? Or is this sort of recommended as a beginning? Or keep a percentage of E and D sort of in reserve for a reason? Anything you want to add?
Yeah, so keeping E and D at a healthy number to to Mr. Glenn's point actually helps then with bond rating down the road. Because we, we again, are going to need to borrow its, well, assuming things move forward with the ME Small Project, we are going to need to borrow, and we are the borrower, when a project like that comes along. So we, as the district, borrow and then assess the towns for the capital expenses, right? So we, if we have no healthy E and D, that doesn't help our bond rating, which then means higher interest rates, et cetera, et cetera. So keeping a certain amount of money in our E and D helps us when it comes to a bond rating. So ultimately, this serves two purposes. One, again, this was an excess, the specific number was a certain amount of excess unplanned revenue. And two, it, it, the math also brings us essentially right back to where our E and D was la- this same time last year. So those are the the logic train behind that, without having a solid capital plan really to base anything on just yet. So I think once we have a plan and we have know where we need to start spending some funds, then I think we can make a more purpose. So this is, and and it was taking the money, putting it in a savings account that's going to earn some better interest, so that money's going to make more money, better sitting there than where it's currently sitting. So all those things combined.
And there's also a maximum we're allowed to have, correct?
Yeah.
In E and D versus capitalization fund, there's no specific limit?
Yeah, it's correct, and it's 5%. So we're, we're well, well away from that. But still, it's, it's more based upon the previous ideas, but we're, we're a good ways away from that 5%.
Okay, we had a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Looks like that passes as well. Next, we have school committees, liaison reports from the select board. Anything, Marilyn, from the town of Dennis? Anything, Mr. Glenn, from the town of Yarmouth?
I think it's just the ongoing discussions about Matiche's and obviously ME Small, which is still on their plate too, so.
Excellent, thank you. Next, we move on to the superintendent's report, recognition of donations and acknowledgements.
All right, thank you. So I want to start with some of our young Dolphins who have their art on display at the Cape Cod Museum of Art. It's the Through Young Eyes exhibit. This pa- I'm true my dates. I guess, nope, it was already a previous Saturday, so not this past Saturday, but the Saturday before, was the the artist's reception, but their art is on display from that Saturday all the way through May the 8th, or no, excuse me, May the 18th, at the Cape Cod Museum of Art in Dennis. And this is in a partnership with the Cape Cod and Islands Art Educators Association. The the museum hours, they're open from, on Tuesdays through Saturdays from 10 to 4, on Sundays from noon to 4. And this all, there's over a dozen DY students who have their art on display at this exhibit. So again, it's Through the Through Young Eyes Art Exhibits, an annual exhibit. This is 21st Annual Exhibit, and again, over a dozen of our students have their art on display at this exhibit. Next, the Barnstable County 4H donated sunflower seeds to every student in grades K to 5. And with this donation included curriculum for staff regarding plant growing, the benefit of sunflowers, as well as a letter to parents to support, included documentation for how you can plant the seed, how you can grow it, how to, like, quick and easy ways to plant it, like, in a simple cup like this at home, and to get it from a seedling to be able to plant it, plant it in your yard. So again, just a big thanks to 4H to be able to get that program off and and teach students about sustainability. And then another shout-out to our art students specifically, students at the DY High School, and specifically to students taking pottery. So students in our pottery courses created small flower bud vases. Then these were for, specifically for a project. There's a, it's on the 9th, so what is that, Wednesday? Was today the 7th? Yeah, no, Wednesday, yeah. So on Wednesday, there's a Cape Cod- So on Wednesday, there's a Cape Cod Soup Bowls for Hunger event. And so the students in that class created the, there'll be decorations for them to put flowers in, these little vases. And so the students in the pottery classes created the table vases to support the flowers. And then actually, two staff members, Mr. Brote and Mrs. Steres, created several of the soup bowls for the event, which are auctioned off for the event. So both staff and students supporting a great event here in our community. And then the other one I had was already stolen by two different people, which is the On Car Performance. No, it's fine. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to beat that drum again. Touche. All right, so next I have, I just want to pass, just in case you folks are not on our remind, just pass the press release. So we did conclude the hiring process for Mr. Deppens, well, nobody can replace him, but the next principal of the Baker School. And so I'm pleased to announce the selection of the next principal, effective July 1, is Mr. Patrick Riley. I had a great challenge in that we had an excellent pool of candidates all the way. I didn't participate in the initial round of interviews, but from those that did participate in the initial round of interviews, that there was a strong pool of candidates, there was a big pool of initial people that were interested, which meant that they had a strong pool of people that they actually brought in just to initially interview, which got us down to a strong pool of semi-finalists, which got us down to really two really great finalists. And it really came to nuanced differences in selecting the final candidate, which again, ended up being Mr. Riley. Comes to us with previous experience both in the district as an assistant principal at St. Nav, a principal at ME Small, and then has also stepped outside the district and has been most recently the principal of the Truro Central School. So brings both perspective from inside the district and outside the district, has a commitment to both students and their social emotional well-being, but also really to academic excellence, which was really something that was really central and important as we continue to move forward as a district that, you know, we've talked a lot about at this table where we really need instructional leadership and we need to continue to move that needle as a district. And again, I can't, there were so many people that participated in this process to get here. It was really a rigorous process, multiple layers, the last part being the finalists spending all day and night at Ezra Baker to ultimately get to this final decision. And again, it really came down to really some subtle differences, which I had, you know, I've said Maria and I were debriefing it this morning, I really had a good problem in that the interview teams that did all the work really gave me two great choices. And I think we have a great candidate to not only honor the history in the Baker School, but also then move it forward into its next phase as a school. Next is our other open search process, which is the Director of Finance position. So in your packet, you will see you have the updated timeline. Unfortunately, I think, I can't remember if I, I know I updated you all an email, I just can't remember if I've mentioned it in public session or not, but, you know, the first round of interviews were not successful, so we had, we did repost the position. That posting has closed, it closed on Friday. Maria and I met this morning, or this afternoon, actually, I think it was right at noon, right? So at the bridge between morning and afternoon. And we selected from the pool of candidates, we have five resumes that we're going to invite in for interviews. And you can see the new timeline here, which gets us, hopefully, a candidate to recommend. Again, this is a position that ultimately I'll bring a candidate, but ultimately you all have to appoint this position because of its tight relationship to the budget. So that timeline has us now out to the beginning of May for that final recommendation, the middle, actually, sorry, the middle of May, the 15th of May. So again, we're hopeful, different pool of candidates, and we're hopeful that we will be back here in the middle of May with someone for you all. It is a very difficult position. Actually, Cape and Island Superintendents met on Friday, we're talking about this, similar challenge across the district. I know the chair got an email from another district who is having challenges with the pool and just sort of confirming, is this what everybody else is seeing? And it is, it's a difficult position. I know the Superintendent's Association across the state is trying to work with Masbo, which is the School Business Association group, on how to sort of deal with this applicant or the, what's the word? Yeah, or just the pool. I'm trying to, I'm losing the word. But anyways, but that doesn't help us right now, right? They're sort of thinking about it more long-term and how to build a pipeline, that's the word I was looking for. And, which is great, but that's long-term, I need today. So I'm, there are some strong candidates in this particular application pool we had, so I'm hopeful that they'll see the process all the way through and that we will be back here in May celebrating. That brings to the last item, so school safety planning, which again, ties back to one of my goals. And so you've had a couple of presentations and we talked a little bit about the new standard response protocol that we adopted as a school district. I know Officer Pascaroza did a presentation early in the year on the I Love You Guys protocol. And so since then, we've adopted, we have, we had a training as a school leadership team, there's an app, or actually, as the, as the safety team, I shouldn't say a school leadership team. So those of us that meet in that joint team that I've mentioned before, that's made up of school staff and public safety, on an app that is, has the protocol built into it. Didn't recognize my face because it wasn't facing my face. That has the protocol built into it. So we've started with some initial training with that team on, and how to run it. So now the next phase is to work on training with school teams and get everybody in the district trained on the app. Because the app is essentially a digitized version of all that protocol training that you got in. Alerts, so the idea would be if we had to activate any one of these in a school, that everybody would get alerted on their device that, you know, we're in a hold, or we're in a lockdown, or we're in whatever, or we have to evacuate, et cetera. And then we could start, we could do reunification and those pieces through the app and the rostering, et cetera, et cetera. So we're going to begin pilot, with a couple of pilot schools, we'll start with some of the smaller elementary schools, we'll do this spring, or soon, actually, within the next month or so, we'll get training for the smaller schools and run some drills with the smaller schools and work out some of the bugs. And then that will be followed by the whole district rollout by next fall. We'll get everybody in the district trained and then start drilling with everybody by next fall. And also be, start to work on integrating one of the benefits of this particular tech platform that we went with, is it, excuse me, integrates with some of our other systems, so like our controls for the doors. It integrates with some of those, with those control systems. So starting to work on some of those integrations to be able to, you know, if we're in a lockdown, to be able to automatically lock all the doors, things like that. So by next year, we'll be running all the drills, will occur with the app as a, as we begin to train, again, work out the bugs, work out the systems. But then we'll be training with the app and everybody will be on that system. So that's, again, continues to move forward. I also, on a tangentially related note, I attended a meeting Friday with Cape and Island Superintendents at an off-site location. I'm going to be deliberately vague about the location, but to discuss mass evacuations. So if we had to evacuate, and because other school districts have the same challenge. So if we had to mass evacuate the portions of the district, and we had to take students to a third site that isn't affiliated with the district, and work on student and family reunification at that site. And we're talking about what if we could all work on a plan at a site like that and essentially develop a plan with that site that would be essentially the same plan that everybody could use, and develop some type of a consistent MOA or MOU with that site? Because the chances of us all needing to use the site at the same time are unrealistic. The chance of us, any of us ever needing to use it are very, very slim. The chances of all of us needing to use it at the same time are really, 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 really slim. So having a, finding a location that multiple places could potentially use should we ever find ourselves in this situation. So we started that conversation, the place is open to that work. So it's designing a template that each of us could use, and then down the road, potentially drilling that situation. And/or, you know, whether we all drill it, or as a leadership teams, like one school district drills it and the others go and observe, because again, if we're all using the same space, then it's, we can all learn from each other. And then the last is two Fridays ago, so the 28th, myself, and then some district staff, and some school building leaders, plus some of the mental health staff, because we didn't want to remove all these people from the buildings all on the same day, at the same time, from DY Intermediate, DY Middle, and DY High School. Attended a training at Sandwich High Schools, this is a partnership between us and Sandwich Public Schools, to do what's called C-STAG training. So C-STAG stands for Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. And so we attended an all-day training on this. And essentially what C-STRAG training is, is a process for creating interdisciplinary teams. And the process for the teams is to assess school threats and determine first, is the threat, what they call a transient threat, which is not a serious threat? Like, you know, if some kid says, like, in a joking manner, oh, I'm going to kill you, like, you have to assess it and determine, is it a threat or is not a threat? But if you determine it was done in a joking way, then that's a transient threat. But you have a process that you go through to determine, and an interdisciplinary team does, goes through that process. Or is it a substantive threat? And then if it's a substantive threat, then there's another set of steps that you go through to determine what's going to be the response. And there's like levels to substantive threats too. And you work your way down the levels and determine the responses. So that group had, sort of our first group to go through the training. Again, it was, wasn't everybody that we would want to have on the team, because everybody that we would have on the team would have meant we would have dumped the building of all the people who respond to a crisis, should there be a crisis in the building. And so we didn't feel like that was a good idea to do at our intermediate school, our middle school, and our high school on a Friday. So we pulled some of those people out. So what'll happen next is, I just had a meeting about it today, those people will come back together over the next, we'll start, I think we decided to start the week, work right after April school vacation. Those people will come back together, debrief the training. So it's, you know, one of the great things, we walk away with this great manual, it's got the whole process broken down, all the details, it comes with all these customizable forms for you, like, interview processes, step-by-step, step-by-step steps, to follow as a district, but to take these and customize them for DY. So what's the DY version of this process going to be? And then also, what's our public-facing version of this? Because it's also important for us to communicate, should we get a threat, this is how we will respond. And for us to be clear with the public, should this, should we get any type of a student threat, an adult threat to the building, this is how we're going to respond. This team made up of these types of people, this is the process that they go through. So that everybody understands that this is the process that we use. And so that, there's already another training scheduled for the fall, around the All Cape In Service Day, where we'll then get the next batch of folks. So the folks that didn't go this time, we'll send the next batch of folks. But then when they're getting trained, we'll have already the DY version of this in place. So they'll get the generic trainer, same trainer, she was fabulous. She works in Cambridge, she was trained by the, she was a fellow with the person who created this, but she works locally in Cambridge. And so she'll come back, she'll do the training, and then we will get the next batch of people, they'll come back, be integrated into their school teams, and we'll have this DY process in place. And then we'll work and schedule the next round of folks. And then at that point, we'll probably have just about everybody we need trained, and then by that point, it'll be maintenance training going forward. So that is that. And that's, you know, part of, one of the things I think I've mentioned, I meet with the Cape and Island Superintendents once a month, and I think everybody else stepped backwards, and I was the last one standing, so I ended up somehow as the chair of that group. And so one of the things that I know I've been trying to push as an agenda with that group is this type of stuff where we can work together and share opportunities to train around like needs. And school safety is one thing that we're all working towards. And so this was, this actually is an outgrowth of those conversations where myself and the Sandwich Superintendent knew that this was something that we were both working towards. So we worked collaborative and shared the cost of this training. He hosted, we participated, and split the cost. And now it's expanding to where the collaborative has taken on the next round. So the collaborative is going to host, actually, we're going to host it physically here in DY, but the collaborative has gone on to organize, contact the vendor, the collaborative will then bill out to the districts. So it'll actually be even less expensive because more people can participate, and instead of the cost getting split two ways, it's going to get cost, it's going to get split over everybody that participates. And it's, so anyways, so these are just opportunities where we're trying to work more collaboratively as a, as a group of superintendents that have similar, similar needs. And not, will every district participate? No, but more than two are going to participate this time. So it's going to split, again, split the, share the wealth, for lack of a better phrase. I think that is everything.
Mr. Glenn?
Thank you so much for that. And not only was that one of your priorities, but that was a priority of the school committee. And so, you know, we can't drill home enough how important safety is for our students. My question is, and maybe it's in a collaborative vein, but financing and funding are always, you know, unfortunately, we have to put a number on everything. This seems to be very reasonable and you're sharing the cost. But is there any way that we can look into funding the same way, like federal funding, state funding, where we do it collaboratively? And do we ever anticipate that we kind of line item it in a budget? Is it just our cost of doing business like our lights? Or do we want to drill down and say, we put this in the budget and line item it?
So I think it depends upon what we're talking about. So when, if it comes to like, training like this, I think we could, we could line item the costs. And this wasn't, this is actually fairly reasonable. And in this particular case, because of the staff that were involved, we were able to actually cover this under some grant funding that Maria had access to. If we're talking about, like, so for example, I have an email from one of the two towns, from one of the select board members regarding security cameras at our elementary buildings. And that select board member is interested on moving some work forward there. So there's some interest from the town. My thing is, I don't want to just move it forward at one town or one elementary school, right? And we've raised this at our safety committee meetings as well, in that the elementary schools essentially just have one, well, not essentially, they just have one camera at the entryway. And now each of our elementary schools are laid out differently, so it's not like we can say each school needs, you know, whatever, 10 cameras. It's more about, and I've actually tasked, the committee's going to start working on it at the next meeting. it at the next meeting, which was, which was generated from this email, on determining what sort of the basic, I forget how I phrased it, but like, what's our baseline for an elementary school? Like, what do we want for base coverage? So as a simple example, like, we want the front door covered, do we want the playground covered, do we want the cafeteria covered, the main hall is, like, what are the, sort of the areas that we want covered in a K to, pre-K to three elementary school? Then we'll have to look at each plant and say, because Ezra Baker is designed very differently than Station Avenue, which is designed very differently than ME Small. And that, and in order to cover those areas, it's going to require different numbers of cameras in each of those buildings. But if we say that this is what type of coverage we want, then we can then start to map out what it's going to require to be for cameras in those buildings. And then we can go back as part of the capital plan and say, this is what it's going to cost. And then we can say, is it a, because part of the work of the capital planning will be to prioritize those items. So is this a, you know, whatever we come up with, if four is the top and a one is the bottom, or vice versa, you know, four is the top, then is this a four, is this a three, is this a two, is this a one? Where does this fit against all of our other needs?
Yeah, so that, I mean, I wasn't using it as a mechanism to lowball you, but to get
Yeah.
A showing of the community, to everybody to know that these are all of our priorities, and I don't think there's too many people that would be against it, but that we can maximize and get, you know, use it as a mechanism to get all we can get
Yeah.
Instead of, you know, cost cutting. Because we all know that funding and, and getting resources are all finite at some point. So we have to understand that. But if we let everybody know that, that this is a major priority and we're not lowballing anything. So that, that was the purpose of asking the question.
Yeah, no, yeah, I didn't, I didn't think you were. I, I agree with you. I just think we have, we have a responsibility in that we have to organize and present the information. Like, I don't think we can just show up and say, hey, we need a bunch of cameras. Like, we need to be clear on, like, what is it we're asking for, and what does that look like? We have to do our due diligence as well. And then there are, you know, I know John and I had a conversation, because I went, when I went to the Superintendent's Conference, there was a presentation on, I'm going to lose the acronym, I think it's MCOP. There's a, there's a couple of federal grants, which are related to school safety planning. And I know John's done some work with them in the past. And I went to the presentation, and they, they make no bones about it. It is a, how do I word this delicately? It's not an easy process to get, just to get through the bureaucracy to get to the funding, right? So, you know, without a full-time business manager at this time, right? It's like, because I was like, I was like, all excited about it until they really started talk, they were like, oh, here's all the things that qualify. I'm like, oh, we need that, we need that, we need that. And then they started talking about, well, you know, here's what you have to do in order to actually even get into the government grant process. And I was like, ooh, do I really have time to do that, like, myself, right now? Probably not. So it's, I, I do think we will be able to access, because then it's another revenue stream in order to access, that we won't have to ask the towns for. It's just, like, I see that, it's like, right over that little horizon when we, if I go back to, you know, the Superintendent's Board, like, when we get through that other little process of hiring Director of Finance, it's like something I can then say, here's something we need, I need you to get into that EdGov process, I need you to get us the credentials we need, because when that next round opens. And quite frankly, a lot of that stuff, just given everything that's going on right now, most of that stuff hasn't opened even. Like, it was supposed to have opened in March and hasn't. But anyways, that's neither here nor there. Once that stuff opens, like, I want us to be able to into the next round, because it, because we have needs and needs that we can meet with that funding.
Yeah, well, that's why I was asking about collaboratively with the collaborative or with other districts
Yeah.
To maybe go for that funding collaboratively. But thank you so much.
Yep.
Now, as you're talking and I'm looking around this cafetorium and seeing five cameras, and realizing we have more cameras in this cafeteria than we do at elementary schools is, is a hard thing to swallow. And with that, I know this was part of your superintendent goal five, I probably should be better about this, and I'll look at Ms. Miller, who may have an answer for me, of when evaluations are due, because I know it was prior to the May 20th election. So I would believe they are due in May, and I could be wrong. But we will make sure an email goes out, the evaluation templates have been sent out. So I know you've all worked on them already. But I'll ensure that we have the resent out links, because they are due in May, prior to the both town elections, so that all the sitting members now can give their feedback evaluations in the event that there is any changes in our board.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure I'm scheduled. It's either the next meeting or the meeting after that, to give you my final evidence. So it's coming up soon, it's right around now.
So just notice it said goal five, and figured I should remind those who take a little longer or need the time to, you could start filling out comments at any time, and then wait till the final one before it will be due and we have our public discussion of it. Next, we have school committee, business enclosure. We have a donation from the Rotary Club of Yarmouth, I should have known that, Rotary Club of Yarmouth, a thousand dollar donation for this DY Horticulture Club and the DY Garden Project. I heard a great presentation a couple of weeks ago about the Horticulture Club and the garden project. They're building a garden at the front of the high school, which will be doing a lot of different programs. They'll be working on a community garden over the next, you know, year or so. But the seedlings, and we had some, they had some dirt that was donated, which is really important. But a really great project that I got to hear about. But the Rotary Club of Yarmouth donated a hundred, a thousand dollars to help start some of that. And then we had the minutes from March 17th on the consent agenda. Anyone move the consent agenda?
I moved the consent agenda.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, any extend. Billings, requisitions, and payrolls are all signed. Calendars, I know Ms. Powers is very excited about all the things going on at the school, most importantly, the half-day on April 18th, and then the April vacation, which is the 21st to the 25th. And then we have our next meeting next week in, before that vacation. So that's calendars, public comment. Our policy on public participation at meetings can be found on the table in the back with the agenda. The public is reminded that a school committee meeting is a meeting of a governmental body at which members of the body deliberate over public business. We welcome your attendance and appreciate your interest in reviewing your school committee as we conduct our regular business meeting. The school committee believes that the school district community should have an opportunity to comment to the committee on issues that affect the school district and are within the scope of the committee's responsibility. Some questions you may have may, have, may, some questions you may have may not be within the scope of the committee's responsibilities. In that case, I will suggest that you send or give your question in writing to the appropriate person, so that your concern may be given proper consideration. Individuals may address topics on the agendas, items specific for public comment, or items within the scope of the responsibility of the school committee. This is an opportunity for individuals to address the topics on the agenda. Each citizen will be allowed to speak for no more than three minutes. Do have anyone interested in speaking? Excellent. If you can just give us your name, then you will have three minutes. You've got to make sure the green light is on. There's a button that says push, doesn't always work. It's right below the light.
It's all set. Thank you. Kate Gregory, good afternoon, good evening, everyone. A little background, I'm a forensic social worker for the court systems on the Cape and Islands, and I, I have lived on Cape Cod most of my life, in Dennis specifically. I went to Ezra Baker, I went to Wixson, and I went to DY myself. Moved away for a little while, worked in the prison systems off Cape, but I've been back for approximately 15 years. And one of my roles was working in the school districts, various school districts, as a school-based counselor with elementary-age children. And I'm here to advocate for my son, Cole. Cole has been at the Ezra H. Baker Innovation Preschool for two years. He was moved into the second year of preschool last year versus some of his peers that were, had fall birthdays. He was moved because his teacher felt like he was ready to be in the sec, the older group, and all 11 of his other peers are moving on to kindergarten this fall. Cole's birthday happens to be September 4th, and I know this district, I know 33 Massachusetts public schools have September 4th and further than September 4th as the cutoff ages, including Sandwich is September 13th. But the Dennis-Yarmouth District is August 31st. So I did reach out first to the school, and then I reached out to Dr. Smith. And I spoke to some of my colleagues, one who went to the school committee in Falmouth and advocated for her son to start school, start kindergarten early because of the cutoff as well. And she had a positive experience going to the school committee. Dr. Smith explained to me that it would be something that I would have to go to the school committee on. I researched a little bit with the different schools and the different start dates, and the school committees actually in Massachusetts do not need, need an appeal process to, to make changes or make exceptions for students when there's a specific policy. So I researched that a little bit, and I just feel like his teacher feels like he's ready to go on to kindergarten, his father and I, and my mother, who's lived in Dennis for, since she was pregnant with me, 40, almost 48 years ago, feel like he's ready to go on to kindergarten, and it would be very detrimental for him to not move on with his peers. All 11 of them are going on, and he's been with them for two years. It's also only a two hour and a half, four days a week preschool that he's in, and I feel like he needs more than that educationally. And I'm really worried about him socially, especially as my background, as a social worker, I feel like he's been with these peers for two years, he's ready to move on. And that is my plea, is that I'm not asking for a complete policy change, I'm asking for, I feel like education should be individualized for each individual student. I'm asking for an exception. I believe all parents should be able to come here and plead their case to the school committee board. So I'm not saying that I'm the only one that should have an exception. I'm saying that if, in my situation, whose child has been in the preschool at Ezra Baker for the two years, should have a chance to move on. I don't need a full change of a policy, but I feel strongly. And he will be five when school starts, because Cape Cod, I don't understand why, like, it's not September anyways, Sandwich makes sense, September 13th, but Cape Cod schools, I think only one year did they start before Labor Day, for some reason, because of snow days. But otherwise
If you could just wrap up, we're just at the past three minutes. You can finish, you can finish saving, I just have to remind.
That's all I have to say.
Okay.
I'm just advocating for my son.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else that would like to speak during public comment? Anything from the committee? You have a motion? To adjourn? Would you like to make that? I make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?